Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call our meeting to order, March 22nd meeting to order. At this time, we will have our invocation. We did have, someone had asked about someone doing it via Zoom. Was that followed up on or no? Minister via Zoom? No. All right, we've got enough ministers on the dais. I'll go to Councilman Davis if we could stand for the invocation, following which we'll repeat the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's pray. Gracious Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us. We thank you for the opportunity to come again in these hollow walls. We pray that you will bless our endeavors, our efforts, our ideas, that you would give us grace and peace, give us knowledge, and with that understanding tonight, that we might do the will of the people. We thank you, God, for the opportunity to do this in this nation that we have, continue to bless this nation, and the leaders at every level, level in government, in law enforcement, firefighters, military personnel. God, we continue to thank you for the restoration of our nation as we were bound from COVID, continue to bless those hard workers and all of those who do the hard work of serving others. We ask these things in Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands where we stand, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies of the Girl Scout. That was, that was wonderful. I'm sorry, my big mouth was repeating the Pledge of Allegiance out loud. So my apologies, ladies. Great job. At this time, we'll ask that Mr. Scott Bullitt will come and to update us on COVID-19 in our community. Oh, Lord. Need some.
Hey, I learned to whisper in a sawmill, so I'll make it. Thank you, Gavin. So I don't have a crystal ball to see what he's thinking. It wouldn't surprise me for some gathering limits possibly to expand a little bit. I think the school system and the fact that we don't have an outbreak recorded in what was reported here locally in our schools commensurate with them starting back is a good sign. And I think that's something we can celebrate. Also, I've got one to throw back to the mayor about our metro partners. For once, I'm pleased that we have bested Charlotte Mecklenburg County by having more people fully vaccinated than they do at 10.2%. So that's something to be proud of. It may only last tonight, but we wound up the Queen City. I know you have some questions, so I'll just leave it at that. If you have anything more specific, we can get into it and subject to your questions.
Thank you, sir. Certainly, it's great news to hear about it. I was going to share some statistics also from Mike Nagaskin, his team. I think he said that they are at one of the lowest numbers since COVID began at 21 inpatients, which is great news from a high of almost 100. So that was, looks like we moved, trended in the right direction. Councilman Hare?
Thank you. For one thing, Chief, would you restate, since your mic was off, would you restate about the vaccines for all? Make that statement that you were talking about the vaccine?
Cape Fear Valley will begin making appointments this week for what was termed by the state as Group Five, which is everyone down to that age limit, the magic age limit at which you can accept the shot. So you have to go to their website to enroll, but I'm sure it'll be fairly easy and just a matter of typing it in and scheduling it.
Now, this was my other question. This morning, I was involved in a meeting, and I heard several people say that we have had our shots now, so we can go back and hug and just business as usual. And I was looked upon because I continued to wear my mask. And I said, no, I'm gonna wear my mask until the CDC tells me not to wear it. So can you kind of give some clarity after you, if everyone has had their vaccines where you are, you know, where a small group, home, family, what's the protocol still? I mean, now with that?
At this hour, you're following exactly the guidance that they want you to follow to continue with the precautions. Now, if you're among your household or people that you live with that are all vaccinated and taken care of, you can opt not to wear the mask in that household among your group. But when you're out in the public area encountering people that you don't live with, you still need to practice the six feet, social distancing and mask. Absolutely, we're going to treat everybody the same. And until that executive order is relaxed with the mandatory mask piece of it, which could come Friday, I don't know what's anticipated there. My shop has had some confusion over the discussion about the schoolchildren and going from six down to three feet.
Yes, I've heard that.
I'm not sure there's one group advocating that, other groups are not. So I think sometimes it's necessity in a school situation, how far children can actually sit apart in a classroom and how they have to do what they have to do. But at this point, we're still following the guidance, as you mentioned, exactly to the letter.
Thank you, sir. I hope the people that was in the meeting with me this morning are looking tonight. I'm picking at them.
But we have reports all around the nation, and there's some very concerning behavior that's probably, it probably sinks with this beautiful weather we're having and that the people wanting to get out with spring break behavior and that sort of thing. And now is just not the time.
Councilman Wright?
Yes, Chief. You did make the statement about the behavior like at the beach and those things that's going on around the country now. Question is, with churches and organizations that come together as groups, what is the limit now when it comes to church services and things like that?
There were some exceptions made in the current executive order, and I'm at a loss to quote them entirely off the top of my head. But I think for the purposes of not splitting too many hairs, that mask gathering limit is still in effect till Friday, which got us 25 indoors and 50 outdoors. Now, there were square footage in some of those houses of worship where people could do some things indoors, but regardless of what's being done, there's still social distance factors that have to be implemented and the mask wear inside those houses of worship. I think for the faith-based community, there's kind of a transition point right now about resuming. And what does that look like? And that may be even a little more, it may be easier, it may be a little more difficult come Friday. I'm not sure what that looks like.
So, so what's going to happen Friday? They're going to ease the restrictions or?
Well, the current order expires Friday at 5:00. So there'll either be a resumption of what we're doing, or there'll be something new that'll hit the street.
We'll know. They'll give us that information.
I hope we'll know tomorrow afternoon when the governor takes the microphone at 2:00.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Bullitt? And Cape Fear, the vaccinations take place on On Drive or at another location?
They had moved their first term vaccinations downtown here to Center Pharmacy, I believe, if I'm telling it right.
What's the name of it?
Center Pharmacy.
Okay.
I would trust the website, don't trust my memory. It'll tell you when you make the appointment, give you all the directions and wherewithal.
All right, 16 and up, let's get vaccinated. That way, spring break won't look like it looked over the weekend. But thank you, Mr. Bullitt. Look for more good news.
I want to make an announcement as far as masks. I have protective masks for any organization that would like to get some. You can reach me here at the city, call, and they will give me your information and where you can meet and get masks for your organization, your church, or nonprofit, or just individuals.
Thank you, Councilman Wright. All right, moving now to Ms. Sharon Moyer and Ms. Mary Sonnenberg. Update on the federal grant, new programs for partnerships for children. Are both of them joining us by Zoom? Okay.
Good evening. Good evening. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, ma'am. How are you?
I'm great. How are you?
Good.
Well, thank you, Mayor and council members for allowing me to have some of your time tonight. My name is Sharon Moyer. I'm at 301 Broadfoot Avenue. But tonight, I'm here on official business as the Community Engagement Administrator for the Partnership for Children of Cumberland County. As the mayor mentioned, also on the call to help me answer any questions is our President Mary Sonnenberg. So as you may know, the Partnership for Children is a public-private nonprofit formed in 1993 out of then-Governor Jim Hunt's Smart Start Initiative. This initiative's core vision is to ensure that every child has the support they need to enter kindergarten healthy and ready to succeed. In 1993, we were chosen as one of the pilot programs, and to this day, we continue to be a pioneer in early education and family support. Since 1993, our organization has been serving families with young children in a variety of ways through a variety of funding streams. We envision that our community become economically prosperous, where families are successful and children thrive. So to play our part in this vision, we focus on support for families with, families with children birth to five, and our priorities are to provide services and supports that advance the well-being of children, strengthens the early care and education system in our community, and empowers families. We provide a variety of family services, and we support programs like the Dolly Parton's Imagination Library, which is a book gifting program brought to our community by our local United Way more than 15 years ago. We also provide support to early educators. Through our professional development department, we provide training and support to licensed childcare providers. We help early education teachers achieve their professional goals with scholarships and training. We offer onsite technical assistance for early childhood programs to enhance the quality of care in their facilities. And we are so grateful to have worked with so many of you over the years in a variety of ways, just to name a few. Mayor Pro Tem Jensen has served our organization on a committee level. We work with Councilmember Wright on the Pathways for Prosperity Coalition. And recently, city employees provided volunteer support to our organization through our allocations panel. And we have a tried and true volunteer from the city's finance department who spends one Saturday a month helping us get diapers to families. And currently, City Attorney McDonald serves on our Board of Directors. We are proud to have such a great working relationship with all of you and the city staff. As I mentioned in the beginning, we were one of the pilot programs for the Smart Start Initiative, and we continue to look for opportunities to be a leader in early childhood with programs that match our organization's three priorities. And once again, those are advancing the well-being of children, strengthening the early care and education system in our community, and empowering families. So tonight, I am proud to tell you that our organization has been selected to pilot a universal home visiting program, serving families with newborns in Cumberland, Hoke, and Robinson Counties. This program is made possible by the Preschool Development Grant Birth to Five funding, and this is federal funding. North Carolina was one of 20 states and territories awarded a three-year renewal grant starting in 2020. The U.S. Department of Health and Human Services awarded $40.2 million to the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. Two other organizations in the Smart Start Network were also selected to lead this program in five other counties in the western part of North Carolina. This pilot program is in partnership with the North Carolina Partnership for Children and Family Connects International. The Durham-born Family Connects International home visiting model is the model that we will be following. So what does this mean for families in our community? Well, later this year, trained registered nurses will visit families who have requested a home visit. The registered nurse will medically assess the newborn, address postpartum health concerns, respond to immediate needs for support and guidance such as breastfeeding and home safety. They'll link the families to community services and help parents learn to better connect with their infant. The program provides between one and three home visits, beginning at about three weeks of age, and this is regardless of income or demographic risk. Research demonstrates that this model makes families stronger, enhances the lives of children, and saves money. In an ongoing randomized control trial from Family Connects beginning in 2009, results have shown that mothers reported significantly more positive parent behaviors, like hugging, comforting, and reading to their infants. Mothers also expressed increased response to and acceptance of their infants. That home environments were improved, meaning homes were safer and had more learning materials to support infant development. Emergency room visits and overnight hospital stays were reduced by 50% in the first year of a child's life. Mothers were 30% less likely to experience postpartum depression. And as we know, child abuse and neglect is an issue here in our community. Through this program, families reported a 44% lower rate of investigated for child abuse or neglect. And I mentioned savings. The research also shows that for every $1 spent on this program, $3 is saved in healthcare costs. As you may know, we are not nurses, so we have contracted with 4C, which is the Carolina Collaborative Community Care as our nursing partner. In the chat, I will provide a link to a CBS News report on Family Connects International. When you have six minutes, I hope that you'll watch it. And while we are still working out many of the details with the North Carolina Partnership for Children and Family Connects International, we know that this program will positively impact families in our communities. It will change the lives of children, so we can hopefully one day see our vision of an economically prosperous community where families are successful and children thrive. So we'll answer any questions that you might have now.
Thank you, Ms. Moyer. Do have a couple of questions. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Moyer, I just want to thank the organization for all the hard work you have been doing for our community. I also want to congratulate you guys for receiving the grant. I know that you guys will be able to use these fundings in great ways. I know so many parents and children have benefit for this program, so you guys continue to do what you're doing, and hopefully the city looks forward to helping in the future with some of these fundings.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mayor Pro Tem Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank Ms. Moyer for all her hard work and everything that she's done with Partnership of Children. And if no one has been to her annual fundraiser that we all missed last year, it is definitely one of the best that Fayetteville has. So I look forward to next year. Hopefully, that will be on the rise, that we can help for the children. Thank you again for everything.
Thank you.
Fingers crossed.
Councilman Wright?
Thank you, Ms. Moore, for that presentation for Partnership for Children. I just want to say thank you for the very important work that you all do in the county. Sometimes that it might go unnoticed, but the many times we've sat together on boards for P for P and to hear all the numbers that you guys quote, congratulations on a well-deserved grant that you all received that I think is going to make a great impact in the lives of children in our county. So kudos to you and all your staff that works with you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Wright. Councilman Hare?
Thank you, Mayor and council, for this announcement that I'm about to make. I'm happy about it. My mother, Mrs. Isla B. Hare, worked for the Cumberland County School System for over 35 years in the city. And her children, my brother and two sisters, we're proud to announce that she will be turning 90 years old this weekend, and we're having a great big drive-by. So, so many of her children, I would like to, well, I say her children, they're my age now, but those that she's taught, I would like to thank probably Mayor, even maybe in the thousands, over 30 years of teaching. I've heard from so many of them. We're going to be doing a drive-by by our house this weekend in Broaddale. And if you would just contact me, we'd love to put you on the list and give you the details and come celebrate with Mom. Her memory's a little short, so hopefully we'll have so many people that her memory will last the whole day on folks just coming by saying, hey, Ms. Hare. So thank you for giving me this opportunity to announce. It's going to be from one to two, so I hope I hear from many of you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Fantastic. Thank you for her investment in the kids. Ms. Moyer, we thank you guys for the work that you're doing. You've heard all the accolades, but we know you play a critical role. You also, you all have been very, very good at lending your help and your support in our Tier One discussions, which I hope we'll pick back up pretty soon because a big part of poverty concentration, as Councilmember Wright said, with his organization is childcare and access to resources for parents of these children that are so important to our community. So thank you, and Ms. Sonnenberg, for the great work and continue to bring that money back to Cumberland County.
We're trying.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, council, we'll move to Mayor Pro Tem. You have an item?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two announcements that I would like to talk about. The first one is, on Saturday morning, on my way to work, I went to go get some donuts for my staff, and I turned and looked, and I saw a group of gentlemen from Omega Sci-Fi on Ramsey Street picking up trash. And I got, it was not going to be a good day for me, and I had to just turn my car around, and I went to go thank them. And I just wanted to give them a shout-out of everything that they had, the community spirit that they had, and how much we appreciate them. So I just didn't want to let that go without saying anything. So the second thing that I wanted to talk about is a little bit personal. March 25th is the 200th anniversary of Greek Independence Day. There's a very large Greek community in our city and county here, so I just wanted to mention that. So my store is always, I always decorate in whatever this season is, so it will be in royal blue. So on Thursday, March 22nd, 25th, will be Greek Independence Day. And there is always a proclamation up in Washington. Every president has done it to give the Greeks about the birth of democracy. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for letting me have that moment.
Thank you. Thank you to the gentleman of Omega Sci-Fi. We got one or two of those here on the dais, but also members of Kappa Alpha Chi were out picking up trash as well on Ramsey Street. And so, you know, you need to expand your view. There were a number of great organizations, primarily the latter. But all right, so I'll go to Councilmember Waddell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to just take a point of personal privilege to thank this council for the support of the Crown Act that we lent when we passed the resolution, well, when we authorized the resolution. We had occasion, a few of us on council, to speak with a dynamic 10-year-old little girl who was feeling very insecure and very uncomfortable about her natural hair. And we were able to share with her our experiences as Black women who wear our natural hair in corporate settings, or as it may be in the world of elected official. And we have been receiving messages from that little girl for the last few days, just telling how impactful that was and how, how strong it made her feel. And so I want to thank this council for that support in hopes that we will be able to give other men and women that level of confidence and that feeling of, of strength and comfort in wearing what God has endowed them with. So thank you, council.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Ingram?
Thank you. This Saturday, we will have, there will be a special air with Kim Fields. It's called The Journey. It's presented by Cultural Heritage Alliance, and we would like you to tune in. It is a women's history presentation that is featuring a lot of great people from Fayetteville. This committee has put a lot of great work into it, and so we hope that you tune in to The Journey with a legend, true Renaissance woman, Kim Fields. It will air at noon on Fox 50. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin, we have a couple of proclamations, and then you had an announcement, right?
Providing a certificate, a recognition. Thank you, Mayor and council. I just want to take the moment to recognize the Marnarks Varsity Boys Basketball Team at New Life Christian Academy Preparatory School. Their latest accomplishment, winning the national championship. They ended the season with a 21-13 record. This is nothing new to the team. In fact, this is their third national championship. 2021 runner-up for the Carolina Athletic Association for Schools of Choice, as well as the National Association of Christian Athletics. Unfortunately, because of COVID, we're unable to present the award. However, I wanted to make sure that we recognize the team for their hard work and determination. This team was led the season with head coach Aaron Parker, along with Jason Smallwood, Demarriel Robinson, and Billy Brunson. I would also like to recognize the players individually. We have Malachi Travis, Rico Polk, Avinson Singleton, Demetrius Polk, Tremaine Parker, Darian Young. Darian Young, Tristan Robinson, Jordan Hitten, Imari Logan, Melikai Peters. Also, we can't go without acknowledging the team players for their support for the children, as well as the principal, Dr. Alan McLaughlin. So congratulations again for the Monarchs. And I have you guys' recognition here, a certificate of excellence. And we also have Dr. McLaughlin on Zoom, I believe, if you want to have a few words. Is he showing on the screen? Okay.
Dr. McLaughlin, can you hear us? Can you unmute your phone, your microphone?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. How are you?
I'm fine, thank you. I just want to thank Councilwoman Banks McLaughlin for the recognition. It means a lot to our kids. This is our 25th year as an academy, and so I just want to thank her and thank the council.
Thank you, sir.
Do you mind holding up the trophy? I'll see us in the back. Cody, y'all got to represent. That was some hard work. There we go.
Let me just say to the parents who support our academy, to the staff, to the students, to the community, to the churches, New Life Bible Church especially, but other churches, and of course, our superintendent, Dr. Norma McLaughlin. But it's a privilege to try to help kids. Our motto is not to lose one child to the world, and so that's what we try to do. And I want to thank you for the recognition. And the boys will, and our girls team went out there, but they weren't as successful, but they were successful in going. But we wanted to just say that we're just trying to do our little bit for our country and our nation and our people.
And Dr. McLaughlin, congratulations again. Thank you, Councilwoman. You had some other items on here, I think, with the Girl Scouts? I think you were going to meet at the podium. Any representatives from the Girl Scouts here?
No, they were just doing a pledge of allegiance. Do you have something? I do, right. Would you like to read it? Here, get down. Can you just read it? Right. Okay. This is a proclamation for the Girl Scouts. Whereas the year 2021 marks the 109th of Girl Scouts of the USA founded by Juliette Gordon Lowe in 1912. And whereas Girl Scouts unleashes the girl, go getter, innovator, risk-taker, leader, and every girl preparing her for her lifetime of leadership. And whereas Girl Scouts combine time-tested, research-backed methods and exciting, modern program that speaks to today's girls and designed to cater the strength of the girls' leadership and development. And whereas Girl Scouts offers girls 21st century programming in science, technology, engineering, and math, the outdoors, entrepreneurship, and beyond, helping girls develop invaluable life skills and take a lead in early and often. And whereas, as the world's premier leadership development organization for girls, Girl Scouts welcomes girls of backgrounds of interest who want to develop the courage, confidence, and character to make the world a better place. And whereas the Girl Scout Gold Award is the highest and most prestigious award in Girl Scouts, calls on girls in ages nine through 12 to take on projects that have been measurable and sustainable impact on a community by assessing a need, designing a solution, completing a project, and inspiring others to sustain it. And whereas today, more than 50 million are Girl Scout alumnis and 2.6 million girls, adults are current members in North Carolina. The North Carolina Coastal covers 41 counties and serves over 26,000 members. Now, therefore, I'm Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the City of Fayetteville, North Carolina, and on behalf of the city council and more than 208,000 citizens, do hereby honorable proclaim the 7th and 13th on March in the year of 2020 in honor of Girl Scout Week.
Thank you. Let's give the Girl Scouts a round of applause for 109 years. Great.
They've been around.
All right. Congratulations to all of you ladies, especially the ladies that did the Pledge of Allegiance. Great job today. All right, Councilmember Kinston?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would just like to thank the Federal Police Department and Chief Hawkins for the polar bear plunge in honoring of the Special Olympics. They not only met their goal, they raised, exceeded their goal, and it was a wonderful opportunity to be able to participate in the polar bear plunge. I was looking at the numbers, and the numbers of hits on their Facebook account continues to rise. So again, thank you, the Federal Police Department, and doing the raising of the funds for the Special Olympics.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, and congratulations to Federal PD and all of you who participated in that. Item 5.0, council, was the city manager's report as a part of council's commitment to continue to keep the conversation and any actions taking reference to the market house. We've asked the city manager now to update us on market house repairs. I think there was some discussion and some pre-scheduled dates and times of some things that were supposed to happen. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. Good evening. As the mayor indicated, we are reporting back on the progress to make the final repairs to the market house. We have about five days' worth of work to do that will involve erecting a scaffold on the exterior of the building that would allow us to get to the exterior second-floor windows. We have one window to replace, and we have some painting on the exterior on the windows as well to do, and we'll need to access that from scaffolding on the second floor, from the second floor. And on the interior, we have to finish the restaining of the floors and some other minor repairs. All told, again, it'll take about five days, and we're proposing to start that work as soon as the contractor, who's a local contractor, artisan and woodworker, is able to mobilize his staff probably sometime early next week. And again, it will take about five days. But I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have about the work that remains ahead or the work that we've already done.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I did have a question. So the fencing, I get a lot of emails about fencing that's been up for about 10 months. Does that mean that at the conclusion of what you just mentioned, that the fencing will be removed?
It would not be my recommendation to remove it at this time until we can report back to council in April, and council makes a decision about possible repurposing or relocating. But once the repairs are completed, I'll be happy to report back to council at the April work session. And, well, actually won't be completed by the April work session, that's next week. But as soon as we can come back and talk to council, I'd be happy to do that and get council's currents to remove the fence or not, possibly even shrink the fence to where it actually covers the interior of the arches so that you actually have a little bit of the exterior that you can still stand on. But there are still a lot of consternation and conversation around the market house that the council and the community needs to have.
So just to be clear, what you're repairing with the broken glass in the windows from the damage, but then you'll be in a holding pattern until council makes further decisions?
Yes, sir. And I'd be happy to come back, and we can have a discussion and receive direction from council.
Okay, all right. Council, any other questions for the manager? Okay, Mr. Hewitt, while we're under your section, talk to us about what the plan is to reopen City Hall, number of places, even Dr. Fauci, nations-leading infectious disease professional is doing an in-person graduation for UNC. So things are coming back online. If we continue with the trends, what's the plan on opening back up City Hall and bringing our council meetings back to somewhat normal?
Right. On Monday's work session, I think we have, we're going to have a matrix and a conversation with council about reopening City Hall and city facilities. We have a red, yellow, green matrix that tracks very closely to the information that Dr. Fauci, the CDC, and Dr. Green also use. But we are shooting, unless something happens, to be back, open City Hall at the latest May 1st, maybe sooner. But it's my hope on Monday we'll be able to present you with kind of a decision, matrix and tree that we're using. As it relates to council meetings, as you see, we have on all of the arms of the chairs in the audience, we have them already spaced. And so as soon as maybe your first regular meeting in April, we could potentially look at bringing in, you know, a limited number of folks like Scott Bullard. We are very hopeful that the governor will reduce the number from six down to three feet, which will allow us to have additional capacity in here. But we'll be looking to bring some information to council on Monday at your meeting, and ideally, we want to have City Hall and city facilities back open to the extent that we can, no later than May 1st, which is about 30 days.
Okay, thank you. And so council, hopefully if the governor's orders continue to relax and the trends continue, look for us to come back to in-person meetings. I know we've kind of had a hybrid approach, but I think it's almost time for that at this point. So any other questions, comments regarding any of that, questions online, Jen?
Councilmember Ingram?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two separate questions, one about reopening, but something else, so I'll start with reopening. Mr. Manager, do you foresee that for the viewing audience, as you know, we are still dealing with, you know, capacity guidelines, and even after, you know, we overcome capacity guidelines, do you foresee that Zoom will still be an option for listening audiences?
We haven't really given that as much thought, but probably because we will likely have limited capacity in council chambers, and it may be sometime, I would envision that we would probably still maintain Zoom access. As we saw tonight, or over the course of the pandemic, it has actually allowed us, out of necessity, to be able to interact with consultants from across the country who could not be with us. And so we ideally would be able to use this to hopefully save some money in coordination of time and in near future to be able to actually Zoom in participants to council meetings on a limited basis. But like council members, we are most eager to kind of get back to normal. But until that happens, I would envision that Zoom would still be a platform that would be used by, available to citizens as needed.
Thank you. And my second question is related to the American Rescue Plan Act that was recently passed. When do you foresee, you know, I don't know if the money has gotten to us, and when we'll be able to distribute that to our community?
The Rescue Act that we received noticed that we have about $38.5 million that will be accessible to, for the city. Not sure yet how much of that is directly accessible by citizens. President Biden signed it in about 10 days ago, and so we're, like everybody else, are still going through it very carefully. But it's my hope to be able to have a, maybe even a special meeting with the council sometime in April, whereby we would be able to have maybe even our lobbyists and city staff walk the council through the broad categories of the funding that's available. Luckily, I think we have several years in which to draw down the money. And just to put in perspective, again, $38.5 million is, as you can imagine, quite a bit of money. And so it's going to take the federal government sometime to set up some of those accounts and some of the rules, but we are quickly going through, as we can, those rules and regulations. But it's my hope again that sometime by mid-April, we'd be able to have a special meeting to work through with the council, some of the opportunities that that money will provide. On tonight's agenda, I think someone will pull, I think it's 9.01 or 7.015, which is the ERAP, Emergency Rental Assistance Grant, that we received for $6 million, and the plan for that, which will just be coming up in just a moment.
And as a follow-up, I just want to clarify, money's, you know, the $38 million that you mentioned are coming directly to us and does not have to be filtered through the county.
That is correct. The county also has their own separate pot, but you're correct, this is money that will come to the city.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, council, thank you, Mr. Manager. With that, we will look for approval of the agenda. Mr. Councilman Davis?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve item 6.0, approval of the agenda.
All right, this is a motion by Councilmember Davis to approve the agenda. This is a second by Councilmember Wright. Any discussion on the motion? If not, council, I'll look to you for action on this. Councilmember Ingram?
Green.
All right. I think Councilmember Banks is zooming. All right, Madam Clerk, that is affirmative by all those voting. All right, item 7.0 is a consent agenda. Look to you for action on that. Councilman Davis?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, item 7.0.
I think there were a couple of...
Somebody on the pool?
Yeah. It seems like it was 7.012, 7.0...
Discussion information? Yeah.
015 and 7.06.
Councilman Hare, I think that was him.
But I think Councilmember Banks McLaughlin had those two, and she told me that her concerns had been... All right. So...
May I amend it?
Will you amend that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Council, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item 7.01, consent agenda, with the exception of item 7.012, for further discussion.
But approval is of the consent with the, not necessarily 7.01, but the consent...
Yes, sir, 7.0, consent agenda, the entire agenda.
With the exception of 7.012.
012, yes, sir.
All right. So it's a motion by Councilmember Davis. Councilman Hare, is that a second for you?
Yes, sir.
All right. It's a motion and a second to approve with those exceptions. Council, I'll look to you for action on that. Councilmember Ingram?
Green.
All right, Madam Clerk, that is eight. Councilmember McLaughlin, that was, I don't know if you zoomed in in time to catch that.
Right. I did.
All right. All right. Motion carries. Item 7.012, Councilman Hare?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Mr. Inspectors, come on up, guys. As you all are coming up, this is the Mobile Manor Park. The citizens over there consider that address on Johnson Street, so that threw us off a little bit. I had to send them emails all for the neighborhoods that surround that area. It's such a terrible... I get a lot of complaints about that area. You guys know why. You know, I've been alone with the mayor. You know, we've been kind of screaming about that area for a few years. Tell the citizens where we are, which they can see. Tell the citizens what the next steps for the, I didn't go out there today, but for those piles that we occasionally see of metal and other areas, other piles of debris. Tell the citizens also, the residents out there, what are the next steps once it's, if it gets clean? Do they get the grade, the grading clean with grass seed type of cleaning? Let them know that. And where are we, where are we on the other mobile homes that were not a part of the first part of the demo? I think it's about four or five of them that are still there. And what's the process on that? When is there a possible end? But most of all, will the citizens receive a clean grade where it would look clean and something put there where people can't go up there and do illegal dumping? Thank you.
Mayor? Mayor, council?
Mr. Mayor, council, James Rutherford, Code Enforcement Division Manager.
Mayor, council, Derek Planner, Code Enforcement Supervisor.
I'll take the first part of this, because I think Councilman Hare wants to hear a little bit about the history. little bit about the history of where we were and where we've, where we've come to. It originally started off Mobile Manor, Mobile Home Park at 48 lots. There were 40 mobile homes located on it when we began the, I guess, the current thrust of enforcement. And that started with a blight case back in May of 2020, where it came to council, an ordinance was approved for the demolition of seven trailers. That's what's here today for you on the rescindence. Since we started that, 34 of those original 40 trailers are gone. We only have six of those trailers remaining. We have a new blight case that the hearing is going to be this week, which the owners will respond to. They'll have another short period to respond to that. We're required by general statute to give them at least 60 days to remove those last trailers. When that is done, all the trailers will be on. Derek can talk about the, the seven that are replaced.
What's for you, council, is the 7.012, which is the seven mobile homes from the original demolition ordinance that was approved. These seven mobile homes from the original seven, original demolition ordinance have been removed by the owner. So this is seven mobile homes out of 34 that have been removed by the owners out of 40. So that, like, like Mr. Rutherford said, that remaining six are left out of those 40. So, so what's in front of you is the seven that have been removed from the first initial demolition order. So that's why we're rescinding, asking for rescindence on this.
So we have, so we have two actions going right now. One is going to be the blight case that'll address the six mobile homes. The other one is the solid waste violation that addresses the piles of debris, random trash, rubbish. That case is pending. We're taking action to obtain bids to get that cleaned up. I had a discussion today, matter of fact, with the contractor that is doing the removal, explained to him that his cleaning was not sufficient, that he needed to get all the remaining debris gone.
Right.
And as far as the, the grading of the lot, depending on whether or not the city conducts the demolition, if the city conducts the demolition of those remaining six trailers, then that would be part of our scope of work. If the owner does that, we can't force them to do any site improvements. We can have them remove all the debris, all the remaining infrastructure, all the old fencing, posts, poles, that type of thing. As far, excuse me, the mask, excuse me. As far as restricting them access to their own property, it is still a private lot. We couldn't put in place anything that would, would do that from a city's perspective. We can encourage the owner to take those actions there.
Right, that was my thing about...
That's going to be in their best interest. Yes, sir.
That's my thing about encouraging the owners, because while the work was somewhat going on, and the work has been very, very, very slow.
Yes.
Illegal dumping was still taking place. And the citizens over there are having a fit, I'm having a fit. I mean, we, I think there's something we need to do in the ordinance is that's not tonight, we need to kind of revisit, because I think it takes, we give them too much time.
Yes.
And then it just sits there and just gets worse. You, you say that we are, there's a rescinding on the trailers that are still there, and they, are you saying they are being rescinded because...
The ones that were removed, removed already.
Okay, okay.
And so, so the, the council action that forced them, or we could have forced their hand on removing those trailers, that we could have done a demolition ordinance on and took action on, the owner took action on those. Council voted on that May 26th last year, and by the 31st of July, those trailers were gone.
And now help me understand this part of the ordinance. If the city demos it, then the city will grade it? Because I see it all the time. I see it everywhere, a lot of places when buildings are removed. Are you telling me those buildings that I see that are being removed, you may, well, I don't know if I even should ask that?
I'll let Derek address that.
But you know what I mean? You get that, you get that bucket grade?
Yes, sir.
And it looks a lot cleaner.
I deal with that as far as the demolitions go in the city.
And we at least ask for that to be done?
That can actually be added into the demolition, actually the request bid to do the demolition. There's a, there's a block of instructions on there on what we want from the city for the property to look like when it becomes our time to do the demo.
But when we get to that point, we're gonna...
Depending on what the circumstances is for the demolition, we could put that in there for requests for the contracts to be...
I would like that there, because the citizens over there have just been crying too long about it, and so you know where I am.
Yeah, no.
I'm just kind of, halfway is not gonna, we're not gonna be happy. I know I'm not, and the citizen, they're gonna, they're gonna let me know that they aren't. So we gotta really push that we're getting this close, we're getting things moved, but then just don't leave it looking a spry, and you're looking a mess as I'm, when I go out there, so that, because you know, that's, that area is an area that we have to kind of stay on anyway. So you understand where I'm, you understand my feelings.
And that property, it's a large, it's a large parcel, it's over seven acres. And if left unattended or unsecured, it will be something that...
Yeah, I'm, I'm expecting us, I'm expecting more.
Councilman here, we gotta take some action.
Okay, I'm sorry, sir.
Got a long list. I see your button on for motion, I see your passion.
That's just a big issue over there for so long.
So it would only be, be fitting that you make the motion, so I see your light on, so you wanna...
Yeah, well, I just, I make a motion for, Mr. Mayor, that we, 7.012, that we rescind the demolition ordinance.
It's a motion by Councilmember here, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Wright. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for action on this. Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin?
Green.
Councilmember Ingram?
That'll be green, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right. Oh, Councilman here.
Thank you.
Councilman here, I need you to vote. All right, thank you. All right, all right.
Thank you, Mayor, council.
All right, council, entering to item 8.0, evidentiary hearings. Mr. Newton will come forth, there's a new process for this, and Mr. Newton, we'll turn it over to you, sir.
Mayor Colvin and members of the board, this is the same process that you've been using since the fall. We have trimmed down the version as we presented to you Wednesday evening. I'll give the general introduction. Mayor, when it comes to your portion, we only have the applicant here. So in terms of what you see as other parties' testimony and argument, Roman numeral six won't be necessary. So tonight, we have two special use cases that will be presented by the applicant with action to be taken by the city council. Anyone speaking at the hearing must provide competent material, substantial evidence to the city council under oath. Anyone planning on speaking during this evidentiary hearing, please stand and be sworn in by the city clerk to swear or affirm the testimony you plan to give is true. We have two here.
We have Mr. Laney Beck and Tenari Smith, is that correct? Okay. If you could please raise your right hand, sirs. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God? Thank you.
At this point, I'll turn it over. Staff will make the presentation before you go into the evidentiary hearing.
Thank you, Dr. Newton. Evening, council, Mayor and council. The first case we have before you, again, is an evidentiary hearing. The applicant is Mr. Laney Beck, Laney Beck Properties, on behalf of several owners, including himself, at this particular location. This is a special use permit. The property is currently zoned SF6, and this is to allow multifamily development on these properties. The properties in question are located between 1204 and 1228 Superior Point Place. They're .68 of an acre. This is in, in Councilman Hare's district. Just to give you an idea of where these are located, these are, Superior Point Place is off of Waddell Drive, which is off of Murchison Road, kind of the area just before you get to Pamalee if you're heading north. As you can see on here, there's several lots, there's some open space and parking area in one lot, and then there's seven other lots, three of which have already been built on. The applicant is looking to, one, get these in, back into compliance. After the UDO came into, came into being, these kind of were put as non-conforming lots at that time. The other thing is, he also wants the option of possibly recombining all of the lots into one single ownership. And so this special use permit would allow him to, to do these things. Currently, the property, again, is SF6 here along Murchison Road, heavy commercial zoning, some industrial on the other side of Murchison, but completely surrounding this property is SF6. In our, our new land use plan, this particular area is slated for NIR District, which is Neighborhood Improvement Residential. These are the three units that are currently built on the property. There are four other properties that have been subdivided as part of this application, but these are the three that have actually been built. Just a few photos of some of the stuff surrounding the property, again, mainly single-family residential completely surrounding it. While this item must be treated as a new case, our current ordinance provides for review and recommendation by the zoning commission. As you know, that's something that, that will change with 160D here in the near future. So until the ordinance is amended, removing that two-step process, that recommend, recommendation will still be shared with you. The recommendation is to approve the requested special use permit to make the existing multifamily units conform in an area zone as Single Family Residential 6, as presented by staff and based on information provided above and in all attachments. The recommendations do not count as evidence in determining any finding for the aforementioned request. The decision must be based on evidence presented at this hearing, evidentiary hearing in front of city council tonight. The general consistency statement for an approval should include this following paragraph if it's so approved. The amendment is consistent with applicable plans because the city's Unified Development Ordinance supports multifamily development in an SF6 district, as does the 2040 Future Land Use Plan and MAP. The uses surrounding this property are a mix of residential uses which are compatible with the proposed special use permit, and the proposed special use permit is reasonable and in the public interest because the proposed zoning fits the character of the overall area. If you have any questions, the staff, please hold those till after you conduct the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. Madam Clerk, I think you've sworn in everyone. Please call your first, first speaker.
We have one speaker for this evidentiary hearing, Mr. Laney Beck.
Okay. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Before you get started, Mr. Beck, I have a, a statement I need to read just to keep us in compliance, so for the, for the record, if you could please state your name, address, and your relation to the case.
My name's Laney Beck. My office is located on Yakon Road, 5114, Yakon Road, Suite 114. And I represent the owners of the property, that being three different people.
Thank you, sir. Please provide your testimony. If offering expert testimony, please share support and document information to qualify you as an expert to provide evidence supporting the case. And you may proceed, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. We want to concentrate on this property, particularly the building. It's only three units there, three residential units. Each of the three owners own one of the three units. The units were built in 2010. They were built at that time in accordance with the standards of zoning. They met that requirement, so they've been there about 11 years. When UDO came along, that changed everything. So basically, what we have are three units there, which are now non-conforming. And what we want to do is change this by getting a, a change to this so we have, they would conform, and then we are probably going to sell the buildings. We do have a prospective buyer, but we're going to hold up everything on transfer of property in such time we have the correct zoning. We have not done anything to the building since they were built. It was, they were built in 2010, has been no changes other than normal fairway and tear repairs that you may inside of a residential unit. Nothing's been done to the outside of the unit. So it's no changes that's caused at all. This is a mixed unit zoning. We meet the requirements, and they're not making any changes. We don't anticipate on making any changes to the building or to the land. What we want to do is zone it all into one lot and get everything into one lot, and then we can move forward with the change. The units are conforming to the requirements of the zoning, they meet all the requirements. So far, as a residential use, they are being used as residential, they are rental units, and they stay occupied all the time, which is good. Ingress and egress to the property, I don't know if you noticed or not, but on the screen there, there is a, a large driveway entrance to the property. I call it a commercial-type entrance way, so we don't have a problem there. No impact on the current zoning, we're not changing anything, so it stays as it is. Stumbling over my notes here, I forgot my glass, I was so happy to come down here. Excuse me. But we meet, they meet all the requirements, and what we're asking for is a SUP, and with that, we'll be happy. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Right, thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, any other?
We have no further speakers.
All right. Madam Attorney, procedurally, I know this is titled a little different than what I'm used to. You've changed the wording on me, but did I need to open and close this?
Yes, sir, but...
Yes, sir, but I think with the introduction of the speaker...
We considered it open, so now I guess it was considered that testimony part closed.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any questions for staff or, for Mr. Laney? Councilman Wright?
Just have one question, and, and I know that they were built in 2010, but if we could go back to the picture of the units, if someone could go through those units and I just have one question. There is no paving, I guess that would be the parking lot or the entrance way, and maybe in 2010 it wasn't required, but I hear you saying you're going to sell the property. Do you know what is expected to happen after the sale?
We expect to sell the property as is.
Right. So it would be, more units will be built there?
No, sir. We're only concerned about the change announced in the SUP for the three units.
Okay.
Because if the new owner wanted to add new unit, new buildings, then he had to come back to you for changes.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wright. Councilman here? Oh.
All right.
Oh, go to Councilman here. Oh, go to Councilman Hare.
So now you're ready to close, Mayor.
Gotta add this to my cheat sheet over here. All right, Councilman Hare?
Yes, sir, Mayor. I would like to make a motion that we approve for, approve this S U P item, P two one dash zero one, for the special use permit of the single-family units. Thank you.
Is the motion by Councilmember Hare, is a second by Councilmember Wright, to approve based on presentation? Did he need to restate those findings of fact?
That he does.
Okay, Councilman Hare, you have the list in your cam there.
One through eight? You want me to list all of those? To also include, Mayor, that the, that the special use complies with all applicable standards in section thirty dash four, one. The proposed use meets the applicable, applicable standards. There are no additional special, I mean, no additional specific standards for multiple family development. This is a residential community, and the request keeps the feel of the mix of residential uses that are already present. The proposed is an existing multiple-family development. The proposed site would ensure that the project would avoid significant, significant adverse impact on the surrounding land standards, service, delivery, parking, loading, odors, noise, glare, vibrations. The proposed site may, the proposed site would ensure that the project would minimize adverse effect, including visual impacts of the proposed use of the land. The three, the three buildings included are currently built. Any additional residential structures would be required to meet all standards of the U D O. The proposed site would ensure that the project would avoid significant deterioration of water and air resources, wildlife, and all other natural resources. The property is located on a private drive, ingress, ingress and egress, as shown in the attachment that we've seen, that it is a private drive that connects to Waddell Drive, a local street. There has been no evidence present that the property's values and the ability of the neighboring lands to develop would negatively impact, and that the applicant will be required to meet all applicable standards. Woo, that was a lot.
It was a mouthful, brother.
So move.
All right. So, so the motion, as stated, is a second by, who's it, Councilman Wright? All right. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I'll look to you for action on that. Oh, Council reset, all right. Yeah, okay, all right. Look to you for action on that. This button's got stuck. Mr. Manager, we need to check on these buttons also. Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin?
Green.
Councilmember Ingram?
That'd be green.
Thank you. All right, motion carries.
Thanks, Mr. Beck.
All right, good luck to you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Harmon, long time no see.
Absolutely. The next case we have before you tonight is another evidentiary hearing. This is the last of the two that we'll be conducting tonight. Mr. Tenary Smith of Twin State Property Group and Towing has applied for a special use permit to allow an automotive wrecker service in a heavy industrial or HI district. Property is at three one one Dunn Road. Acreage is point six three. This is in Councilman Ingram's district. And just to give you an idea of where the property is located, we've got Grove Street, where it intersects with Dunn Road. You got it, the, for Grove comes over the Cape Fear River here, and then just to the north, you've got where Middle Road splits off of Dunn Road. The type of use isn't allowed use in the HI district, and if it weren't for the fact that here across the road in this area, and you'll see it a little better in a moment, that those are residentially zoned properties, he would not have to come here tonight. There is one requirement of wrecker services, that they be within two hun, with no more than, no less than 250 feet from residentially zoned property, and he, but that that can be reduced by City Council through a special use permit. You'll see on the next slide, and I'm just pointing these out so you kind of remember them, this is the only house that's affected, and the, it actually, the, the line does not come all the way to the house, but there is one lot with one house that is within that 250 feet. So this is the lot that had the house on it. As you recall, the house is just outside of that 250-foot area. This particular property is actually slated as open space park on the plan for this development, and I believe that at this point, ownership is actually by the church over here. You can see that everything on the kind of western side of Dunn Road here is all zoned, some type of industrial. That, again, is where this property is located. The stuff directly across the street from it is zoned heavy commercial. On our land use map, this is looked at, the purple area is a economic employment center, industrial center, and then residential, again, over here where the, the residence is zoned. Just a couple of photos of the property. This particular owner is trying to come into compliance with his towing service. Currently, he operates the office out of the house. The fencing and all is already up, and this is kind of the look you see from the, the road as you're going down Dunn Road. The surrounding properties, both to the north and south, are other industrial-type uses. Again, across the road is both open space and an area, and zone, areas zoned for heavy Again, just as in our other case you just heard, while this item must be treated as a new case, our current ordinance provides for review and recommendation by the zoning commission. Until that's changed, that ordinance is amended, removing that process, we are still sharing that recommendation. The recommendation is to approve the requested special use permit to make this conforming in an area zoned for industrial. The decision must be based on evidence presented at the evidentiary hearing in front of the City Council, and then this should include this general consistency statement as well, that the amendment is consistent with applicable plans because the city's Unified Development Ordinance supports an automotive wrecker service in the HI industrial zone, as does the 2040 Future Land Use Plan and MAP, which supports this type of use at this location. The uses surrounding the property are a mix of industrial and residential, which are compatible with the special use permit, and the proposed special use permit is reasonable and in the public interest because it does fit with the character of the overall area. If you would, please hold any questions you have for staff until after your evidentiary hearing.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, please?
May we just have one speaker, Mr. Tenary Smith?
Evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. How you doing?
All right. I have to read affirmation to you just to keep us legal. For the record, can you please state your name and address and your relationship to the case?
My name is Tenary Smith. My office is located at three eleven Dunn Road, I'm in Fayetteville.
Thank you, sir. Please provide your testimony. If you are offering expert testimony, please share supporting information to qualify you as an expert to provide supporting evidence to be considered. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Yes, sir, no problem. Okay.
Open the public hearing, Mayor. Open the public hearing.
Can't y'all just go back to putting "public" on my paper?
We gonna get it right.
That evidentiary, evidentiary. All right, sir.
Okay, thank you. The property will be used, um, the property will be used as, as a heavy industrial, as it's been, been used since I bought the property last February 2009, 2020, and, uh, prior to purchasing, prior to purchasing the property, I called down to zoning, and I asked them, was I able to run the property, the business out of the location or whatever, and no one knew that the swamp land across the street was residential, because all the land around it was commercial. Hello? Okay. No one knew that the land around it was residential, because everything else was heavy industrial around the whole property. The parcel was, the, the property is zoned at, as heavy industrial to the right and to the left. The company, it was, when I, when I bought the property, it was rundown, overgrown, trees everywhere. It was eyesore. I bought the property, I took over 40 trees out. Roto-Rooter is currently next door to me. They run the same vehicular traffic on a 24-hour basis next to me, on call basis. The warehouse next to me has been vacant for over 10 years. I was just doing my part and coming in and trying to instill something to hire my five full-time employees and, and run a service to bring business back into the, the area and help out with everything. The, the property is positioned in a harder commercial zone, as I already stated. For over the last year, the property at hand has beautified the neighborhood that it serves. With Roto-Rooter and with Roto-Rooter in my traffic or whatever, there will be no major ingress or ingress. I have a driveway that's 20 feet wide, and it's two pulling areas, once you pull in, if you can see from the photos that they had up earlier, so there's no major traffic impact, being impacted on the roadway on Dunn Road to stop the flow of traffic or anything with the, with the business being run here. The parcel would not affect any waterways or anything to the wildlife or anything other than, than to help out with, like I said, to help out with the, the land around it, to help bring up the value of the properties at hand, next door, across the street, and anything future being built around it. The special use will help continue to raise property values around and up and running business, business, instead of a rundown lot that was much of eyesore prior to my company moving in. The business is in the appropriate zone, just a little short of the 250-feet buffer between the residential swamp, open area, and, and the closest struc, I'm sorry. The business is, is in their, the business is in the appropriate zone, just a little short of the 250-feet buffer between a residential structure and a wrecker yard. The closest residential structure is over 250 feet away from the lot that's being used currently. And the special use complies with all applicable, applicable city and U D O laws and everything for Fayetteville, and if you have any questions, I'll answer them.
Thank you, sir. All right, Council, any questions for staff or Mr. Smith? Madam Clerk, is there any more speakers?
No, sir, we have no further speakers.
All right, Councilmember Ingram?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I am prepared to make a motion.
Okay. Uh, I don't see any questions, so you have the floor.
All right, thank you.
Oh, let me close the public hearing, ma'am. The evidentiary hearing. Got fancy on me. All right, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion that we approve the special use permit as it meets all eight findings of fact.
As printed in the cam.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Madam Attorney, that, that'll work, right? Okay, all right. So is the motion by Councilmember Ingram to approve?
I'm sorry, Mayor. No, I got the evil eye from staff over there. She needs to do as Councilmember Hare did, and articulate the eight findings of fact.
Sound like language arts class, but, madam, Councilwoman Ingram, can you read the eight findings, please?
Sure can. Um, all right. Do you need me to just read the eight, or restate my whole motion?
Well, it'll be a part of your motion, so you make a, you move to...
So, yes, I, I, I moved to approve the special use permit as the evidence supports all eight findings of fact, such as, one, the special use complies with all applicant standards in section thirty dash four C, use-specific standards. Two, the special use is compatible with the character of surrounding lands, and the use is permitted in the zoning districts of surrounding lands. Three, the special use avoids significant adverse impact of surrounding lands regarding service, delivery, parking, loading, odors, noise, glare, and vibration. Four, the special use is configured to minimize adverse effects, including visual impacts of the proposed use of adjacent lands. Five, the special use avoids significant deterioration, deterioration of water and air resources, wildlife habitat, scenic resources, and other natural resources. Six, the special use maintains safe ingress and egress onto the site and safe, and safe condition, road conditions around the site. Seven, the special use allows for the protection of property values and the ability of neighboring lands to develop the use permitted in the zoning districts. Eight, the, the special use compiles, complies with all other relevant city, state, and federal laws and regulations.
Thank you, Councilmember Ingram. There's a motion, as stated, to approve based on the, the findings of fact, as stated. As a second, my Councilmember Wright, any discussion on the motion? Council, I'll look to you for action on this. Uh, Councilmember Ingram?
Green.
Council, Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin?
Green.
All right. Madam Clerk, motion carries unanimously by those voted. Good luck to you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Council, we will take just a few minutes break, and we'll return with the 9.0 public hearing items, so let's give about a 10-minute recess. We'll be, be back in just a second. We'll be back in just a second. Call our meeting back to order. Item nine-point-zero, the public hearings. Individuals designed to speak at the public hearings must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before 7:00 PM this evening. Fifteen minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue at the public hearing. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each unless by a previous arrangement a single spokesperson is designated, in which case the spokesperson may use the entire fifteen minutes. When a city clerk calls your name or acknowledges you, please proceed to speak. Please clearly state your name and address for the record. You may then begin to address the city council when the light changes from green to amber or you're notified that you have thirty seconds remaining. And at the end of the allotted time, the timer will ring or you'll be notified that your time is up. At this time, we will go to the first item. I guess it'll be Mr. Vangian.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, counsel. After that break, I'm rejuvenated. Proud to say today, as of Friday, I'm fully vaccinated, and I am invigorated to be bringing you this project today. We have Project Noir, which creatively, if you, when, hopefully the company will choose us, you'll figure out that it's the initials of the company just put together, so I can remember who they were. This is a great project, one that we've been talking about for some time. It would bring, it would eventually bring eighty-one jobs to our community, and we are requesting that you consider an incentive grant that would be based on job creation for this project. It would be the first fifteen jobs would receive a grant of fifteen hundred dollars per job. The next sixty would receive a grant of six hundred and twenty-five dollars per job. It is approximately a four-million-dollar investment in the community, and they would pay an average wage exceeding forty-five thousand dollars a year. This is one of your targeted redevelopment areas. And I think important to note that everything here is performance-based. The company will have to create the jobs. They will have to demonstrate they are paying the wages. They will then receive a grant for the jobs they've created. They must maintain those jobs, increase it, and then they will receive the differential of what comes next. And should they not keep the jobs, they would be required to repay any grants paid within the two years prior to them receiving them. So they have to create the jobs and keep them for an additional two years in order to retain all of the grant. And with that, after the public hearing or before, should you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, do you have any speakers?
No, sir. No speakers for this item.
All right. So with that, we'll open the public hearing. Any questions for Mr. Vangians? Counselmember Ingram?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I am prepared to make the motion if there are no questions.
Okay, all right. So let me close the public hearing, and the floor is yours, ma'am.
Are you talking to me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. First, I'd like to say, Mr. Vangians, thank you so much for highlighting the jobs that it will bring to Fayetteville, North Carolina. And as you know, earlier in the manager segment, you know, we talked a bit about the American Rescue Plan, and as you've heard our president talk about how, you know, we are having to get our citizens back to work. And so I'd just like to say, keep bringing the jobs in. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to hold a public hearing and approve incentives for Project Noir.
So the motion is to approve the consideration of the incentives, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So it's motion by Counselmember Ingram, there's a second by Counselmember Kinston. Any further discussion? If not, counsel, I look to you for your votes. Counselmember Ingram?
Green.
Counselmember Banks-McLaughlin?
Green.
All right. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous by those voting. Thank you, Mr. Vangians. Go get 'em.
Thank you very much. The company looks to make their final decision in the next thirty or forty-five days.
My fingers crossed. All right. Item nine-point-zero-two, initial zoning of parcel currently zoned by Cumberland County as R-ten to MR-five. Ms. Baptiste?
Good evening. This is case number twenty-one-dash-twelve. This is an initial zoning of a parcel that is currently zoned in Cumberland County as R-ten. The applicants are asking to be annexed into the city with a zoning district of mixed residential five. The property is located at two-hundred Andrews Road and is approximately fifty-two-point-two-two acres, and it is located in Council District One. Staff did recommend approval to the zoning commission. However, this action failed, hence giving a denial from zoning commission. That is why the application is being, has been set for a public hearing. You are hearing this application on appeal. As you can see from the subject property map, the parcel is located here. And to give you a little idea of where the parcel is located, Ramsey Street is located just to the east of the property. To the south of the property is Andrews Road, as well as the I-ten interchange, the I-two-ninety-five interchange at Ramsey. In addition, you can see to the north of the property is Fairfield Farms and the cottages on Ramsey. The zoning map shows us that the parcels to the north and to the west of the property are currently zoned as SF-ten. Directly to the east of the property, between the subject property and Ramsey, is a CC commercial zoning district. The land use plan that was recently adopted by the city council shows that this parcel should be developed as a community center, as well as low-density residential. Both of these zoning districts support residential development. The subject property is currently vacant. The applicants are requesting a straight rezoning of MR-five. The applicant is proposing to do townhomes as well as apartment complexes on the site. Although this, I need to remind you, this is a straight rezoning, so that you can understand that even though the applicant is proposing to do certain things, they can do whatever is allowed in the MR-five zoning district by right. The applicant is proposing to do two-hundred-and-sixty-four-unit apartment complex, as well as sixty-eight duplex units on thirty-four lots. Again, the surrounding area to the east is a commercial strip. To the north are the cottages on Ramsey, as well as Fairfield Farms. To the west is vacant, and to the south, which is in Cumberland County, jurisdiction, is a vacant property. Also, there are some residential in that area. Planning staff is recommending approval of the initial zoning from Cumberland County R-ten to mixed residential five. The proposed zoning map amendment implements the policies adopted in the Unified Development ordinance. The use is permitted by the proposed change in zoning district classification and the standards applicable to such uses. The proposed change is in accordance with the existing or proposed plan for the area, and there are no other factors which will substantially affect the public health, safety, morals, or general welfare. The applicant is available, representative of the application is available and will answer any additional questions that you have. Staff is also available for any additional questions.
Thank you, ma'am. So with that, we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers for this item?
Yes, ma'am. We have five speakers for this item. Our first speaker is Mr. Robert Balland.
Mr. Balland, can you hear us, sir? Mr. Balland, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. I have Carrie Wallace with me this evening in my office as well, and she's going to start this presentation.
Okay.
Hi, good evening. My name is Carrie Wallace, and I am at one-twenty-two Cinema Drive. I work for Paramount Engineering. I'm speaking on behalf of the applicant today, and we are very excited to present to the city council tonight. The project site is approximately fifty-two-point-two-two acres and is currently located in Cumberland County. We are seeking a rezone and annexation. Prior to this, prior to moving forward with the proposed, we actually talked to staff early on about what would be the best situation, the best zoning for the situation that we're proposing, which is a mix of housing types, including apartments and duplexes. We understand that this is a straight rezone and not a conditional rezone, but we feel like with all of the natural conditions that exist on this site, that we will not be able to even come close to approaching the allowable density that is in MR-five. The plan that we're... The plan that we're going to be showing today maxes out the site considering the topography and the stream on the wetlands on the site. We we are looking at the current zoning at R10 in Cumberland County and changing that to MR5 in the city of Fayetteville. The slot, the site is, the site is surrounded, you could see early on, the site is surrounded by almost all city zones. And we believe that this would be a natural progression into the city to come in. It's also located in the small area plan for the north of the city of Fayetteville. We are, we're looking at the possibility of proposing only 332 units of apartments and duplexes. This is just 29 more units than what we would be allowed by in Wright. And by Wright, it's a single-family subdivision. And we are, that right would be 303 units based on the density. And we're looking at doing just 332, even though the max density would allow considerably more than that for this zoning. So we'd like to move forward with proposing this rezoning. And another one of the reasons why we think the rezoning would be good is because we have existing utilities that are available on the site, that are available adjacent to the site. We have both water and sanitary. And both of those are served by the city of Fayetteville. So it would make sense to move into the city because we would be using the utilities within the city. I believe Rob could actually talk a little bit more about the utilities.
Right, I'll head on this to Rob briefly. So currently, Pino Garcia.
Excuse me, sir. Each speaker is given a lot of amount of time, so if she's finished, then we can we can conclude and go into yours. And you'll have to state your name and address.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Robert Balland.
That's the gentleman who's on the phone?
I believe so.
And our next speaker that's going to speak for us is Carolyn Bajarski. She's our representative for transportation. She's a transportation engineer, and she's going to touch on a few key points.
All right, so I will need her to, is she a signed speaker?
Yes, sir, she's signed up as the fourth speaker.
All right, so ma'am, if you can just state your name and address, please. Oh, I'm sorry, sir. Did you say Carol or Carolyn?
Carolyn.
Let her in. I know she's from a remote, she's not in the room with us.
Can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Okay, my name is Carolyn Bajarski, and my address is 5808 Barrington Place in Raleigh, North Carolina. Is it my turn to speak?
Yes, we can hear you. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of North Carolina, and I work for Ramey Kemp and Associates. We prepared a traffic impact analysis, or TIA, for this project. And the study area of the TIA was determined through coordination with city staff and the NC DOT. It consists of the following intersections: Ramsey Street and Andrews Road, MacArthur Road and Andrews Road, and Andrews Road and the two site driveways that are proposed with the development. Part of the traffic impact analysis involves determining the vehicle trips that the development would be expected to generate. This data is based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers ITE Trip Generation Manual and is the standard for determining the vehicles that a new development would be expected to generate. As Carrie mentioned previously, 303 single-family homes could be constructed by Wright on this property, and the developer is proposing to construct 332 multifamily units. The proposed development would actually generate fewer vehicle trips than if the land was developed by the by-Wright 303 single-family homes. Although there are more units based on the data within the ITE manual, statistically, single-family homes generate more vehicle trips per day than multifamily homes do. The 303 single-family homes would be expected to generate approximately 400 more vehicles per day than the 332 multifamily units that are proposed with this development. And based on our findings in the traffic study, the additional traffic that the development is adding to the nearby intersections would be less than 5% at any of the existing study intersections. The developer is expected to install turn lanes at the site driveways to mitigate any slowdowns along Andrews Road from traffic turning into the site. I'm available to answer any questions they might have regarding the traffic of this development. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Now, our next speaker is Allison Enbretson.
Allison, what's the last name? Okay, Ms. Enbretson, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. I have a touch of bronchitis, so I apologize if I start coughing here. I'm going to try to get through this. I think that Carrie has touched on most of the points.
If you can, can you state your name and address?
Yes, Allison Enbretson, 122 Cinema Drive, Wilmington, North Carolina.
Thank you.
Carrie's touched on many of the points that I'd like to make. But one of the things that I think is a great fit for Fayetteville with this site is that it is surrounded by current city zoning and by current utilities. It seems like it's a natural fit to bring this into the city of Fayetteville. And the proposed use, while that's not exactly what you consider in this hearing, it is something that is the driver for us to bring it to you. We're proposing apartments, and we're proposing duplexes. And both of those uses are allowed in the MR5 district and are not allowed in most other districts. So that is the reason that we've selected it. We feel like it's a good fit, and we hope we can find a home in Fayetteville. And with the rest of my time, I'd like to yield it to Rob.
Mayor, our next speaker is Robert Balland.
Mr. Balland?
Robert Balland, 122 Cinema Drive, Wilmington, North Carolina. I would like to just, as Allison had mentioned previously, that the site is kind of in an area where we have commercial to the east. We have single-family residential to the north and to the west kind of mixed. And this type of development just seems like a very good transition between those two uses. I believe that's probably why planning staff is recommending approval. I think it meets all the, you know, the area plans for this. We're consistent with, you know, with, you know, we have existing public utilities. Our transportation needs will be met. It's, you know, off of Ramsey Street. It's near I-295 intersection. It's just a really good node for this type of development. So we believe that, you know, this would be a good fit for that area and a good transition piece. Again, it's a good mix of housing types as well to better serve the community. So we're not just proposing one type of single-family home. We're actually giving some options here between one and two bedroom, and then some duplex uses as well. And also, you know, we'd like to point out, as Caroline did on the transportation side, that this is actually less trips than the single-family use, which is out there. And I think if you all have any questions, and I know Caroline could help answer those for you. But, you know, essentially, I'll give my best shot at it. You know, the single-family typically have more members in a household where when you get into apartments, you have the one and two bedrooms. For the single-family housing, or typically three, four bedrooms, you have kids. And, you know, then they start to drive, you start generating more trips. So I think all that's taken into consideration, which then drives up the trip count. So with all that being said, we think this is a great project for the area. We think it's, you know, a great revenue generator for the city. We hope that this rezoning request is approved and the annexation into the city will happen. I appreciate your time, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, our final speaker is Mr. Ralph Huff.
Mr. Huff, are you there, sir? Mr. Huff, can you hear us?
Okay, I just unmuted myself, do you hear me?
Yes, sir. Please state your name and address for us, please.
Ralph Huff, 606 Forest Lake Road, Fayetteville, NC. Having met with the mayor on at least two occasions, talking about building more housing units in the city and increasing more tax base in the city, I was really shocked and alarmed that the zoning commission turned this down. There was one person that spoke against it at that meeting. And I've always thought that multifamily was the perfect transition from commercial to single-family. You've not even mentioned that there's a hospital across the street. That is another institutional use that creates a need for a buffer. In my discussions with Kathy Jensen about the impact in her district, she was very concerned about the traffic in front of the Pine Forest High School and Pine Forest Middle School. I have volunteered to put in traffic lights at the main intersection of those two schools as they come together. And we, I promised, if the materials can be received by the time school starts, to install those before school starts, even if it's before we start this project. So just wanted to put that in. She was very concerned about the fact that there are no sidewalks on either side of Andrews Road or whether no traffic lights in front of those schools. So that's all, that's all I have. I hope that you'll see this as a viable project.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, we have no further speakers.
All right, so with that, we'll close the public hearing. Mayor Protem? Oh, Councilmember Ingram?
Thank you. I am, as we are looking to expand inventory of housing, I'm interested in knowing what would be the price point for individuals for this type of housing?
There's someone, Mr. Huff, or you or some of the other speakers online that can answer that?
One of the things we're trying to do as best we can is to reduce the price of, the cost of housing so that more people can afford it. And a duplex is a way of doing that by putting one unit, two units in one building on a lot. And that's much like the neighborhood to the north, which was all attached housing. But the price on these units should be a little bit under 200, but they'll all have two-car garages.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I had a, you know, understand, clear understanding that, you know, our developers were actually, you know, working to help in the city achieve the goal of affordable housing. So, Mr. Huff, thank you so much. That is, that's some pretty good news. Thank you again.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mayor Protem Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Mr. Huff said when this did come up, of course, I was very concerned that it was on Andrews Road, which is a very, very busy road. And especially when school is in, but due to COVID, a lot of people couldn't see what would happen. I've seen traffic go all the way out to Ramsey Street on a day for kids to be picked up. So outside of Pine Forest High School, there is an elementary school that is Howard Hall. And you take your life into your own hands trying to take a left turn or a right turn out of there. And the intersection is basically right across from each other. So when we were discussing the complex, I had a lot of questions. So the first question I asked was, one of the things that Councilmember Ingram had asked, the prices and what was going to, what it was going to look like and the community, everything about it. So to make a long story short, I got a copy of what it's going to look like. I got a copy of what it is going to be mirrored after a housing development in Charleston, South Carolina, and a housing development in Myrtle Beach. So Sunday, my husband and I got in the car and went to Myrtle Beach and saw the, and walked the property that this is going to be mirrored after. Great community. It's going to be a great community for Fayetteville. I hope that we see more like this that get built. It will be an asset to Andrews Road for us to get sidewalks. There is a hospital across the street. So, you know, at first, I was a no. And then I did the research, and I think that it is going to be a huge asset for us. And if we are, if, it is zoned right now to have 300-plus houses. So for 20 more units, that we have a local builder looking after it and building it to make our city better. I just think that it's a win-win. So that's all that I had to say.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember, what else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Protem made me think about the school situation. I know that probably about, maybe about 10 years ago, that elementary school was considered very full, for lack of a better term. And they did a lot of redistricting at the school level. And I remember that because my children were at that time enrolled at WT Brown Elementary School. And there was a huge uproar because there was a lot of redistricting going on, and they were moving children around in order to alleviate crowding at that particular elementary school. And I think that it had a little to do also with some of the other elementary schools in that area. I think that, or maybe not elementary, but the middle school in the area. But I bring that up because I think that as we consider these multiple units going into an area, we have to think about the impact that it will have on our schools. We have to think about the impact that it may have in terms of fire safety. So I wonder if we can get some explanation as to what consideration has been given to those types of services that are provided when you start bringing in families in the hundreds in an area like that.
Mr. Huff, or any of the speakers that can address those questions?
I guess for a little specificity, my question would be, so that you don't have to guess at my question. I guess my question would be, is there an allotment of funding that would be coming out of this development that would support these services? That would support, is, are we looking at maybe a new school being out in that area? Are we looking at maybe expanding? The nearest fire department down on that end is where?
Andrews Road.
Okay, so there's, there's, are we, is there going to be a new burden on these facilities? And is there going to be some level of investment that's coming out of? Or is it just going to be about the property tax? I hope that my question makes sense. But I just, as soon as you said the elementary school, it just took me right back to that burden that was on that school when it was considered overcrowded. So I'd just like to know if that's been considered.
Ma'am, there is, I think, item 9.05 actually talks about the annexation request, and some of those are considered. As part of that, this is the initial zoning in anticipation that if the owners or applicant is unable to get the rezoning that's necessary for the development, they'd be able to make some changes or modifications and maybe delay or pull 9.05. But there is a fire station just down the road. And the, as you mentioned, the elementary school, middle school, elementary school, and high school are in that same area as well. I'm not sure if our analysis, when we get to the annexation, included enrollment at the schools. But it did contemplate city services and the cost of, or the anticipated or stated amount of investment that would be made, and then the taxable value which might, the city might realize. But I think that is going to come as possibly part of 9.05.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Protem Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion that we approve the initial zoning of partial currently zoned by Cumberland County as R10 to mixed residential 5. MR-5 addressed as 200 Andrews Road, 52.22 acres, plus being the property, I guess that's all I need. Plus being the property, I guess that's all I need to say.
All right, it's a motion by Mayor Protem Jensen. There's a second, looks like, but Councilman Davis, any discussion on the motion? Okay, all right, councilor, look to you for action on this. Councilmember Ingram?
Green.
All right. All right. Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin?
Green.
All right. Madam Clerk, that motion carries unanimously. Good luck to you, to you guys and ladies. Item 9.03, text amendment of Article 30 of the UDO, food truck court by Jordan Sherrod. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and members of city council. Just give me one moment, please, while I pull up the presentation. Okay. Good evening again. Now that I have my PowerPoint up. My name is Alicia Moore, Planner 2 with Development Services, Division of Planning and Zoning. So this text amendment was proposed, is proposed by resident and entrepreneur, Jordan Sherrod. Mr. Sherrod is interested in developing, developing a particular parcel, but this amendment would apply citywide. The amendment would create a new category of land use to expand the types of businesses allowed in the city and to increase options available to food truck vendors. So the, the new land use category is a food truck court, which would allow food trucks to operate as a principal use on a given parcel. And currently, they are allowed only as an accessory use, which requires permission from the principal use. Under the proposed changes, accessory use would continue as an option with the existing regulations, and a new option would also be created with its own set of regulations. And the decision of which regulation is more suitable for the vendor would, would be up to that particular vendor. The difference between the two uses is that the accessory food truck use is necessarily temporary and operate in areas not specifically developed or even contemplated for their use. Whereas food truck courts operate as a permanent eating establishment on parcels specifically developed for their use, which make them more akin to a brick and mortar eating establishment. Food truck courts would benefit the public by creating a new type of commerce and a way to invest in a community by expanding options available to these vendors and small businesses and by bringing a social asset to a community. This picture here is a rendering of a food truck court in Savannah, just, just as a visual example. So food trucks have been on the rise for a while. 2015, the U.S. Chamber of Commerce published a really in-depth index called Food Truck Nation. That's the cover shown here. Other publications put out by, by the Harvard Business School and the American Planning Association, among others. Most recently, Fayetteville was featured in a U.S. News report that described the growing local demand for food trucks among the COVID pandemic. Food truck businesses and would-be businesses face regulatory roadblocks that have restricted or altogether prevented them from operating in Fayetteville. The current regulations allow food trucks only as an accessory and necessarily temporary use. And under those requirements, food truck courts are not possible. Food truck vendors face much tighter restrictions than other eating establishments, including a greater limitation on where they can operate, their hours, whether they can have seating at all, and greater restrictions on signage. Further, they have an additional hurdle of securing permission from a private business owner since food trucks are not allowed to operate out of their own lots. And it could be that the reason behind these extra restrictions is due to the perception of food trucks as purely transient, which underscores the need for food truck courts as permanent fixtures to have their own set of regulations. So one of these would-be businesses is by the applicant, Mr. Jordan Sherrod, who joins us tonight via Zoom, along with his project manager, Ms. Stephanie Purcella. And I believe they will be speaking about their proposed venture right after this. So I won't go too far into this plan. But just to say that the plan is for an eating establishment that centers on the collection of food trucks on the same lot with outdoor seating. The lot located in Haymount, right, where Morganton becomes Hay Street, is close to the downtown district, thus expand, expanding the draw of that area. Mr. Sherrod submitted an application and a proposed draft for the text amendments, which has been updated by, by staff. The two versions have been submitted for your review. The original version is submitted by the applicant and the staff-proposed version, which builds upon the applicant's version, adding technical language, requirements and feedback from various city departments and divisions. But the core of the two vision, of the two versions is essentially the same. So food truck courts, as I said, are allowed only as a temporary use, either during city-approved special events or as an accessory use. As an accessory, a vendor couldn't actually develop a lot to suit their business. You necessarily have to do it in a lot that was designed for a different use, whether it's in a private lot or in the public right of way at special events. And just when, when determining whether a parking lot has extra spaces, the question has nothing to do with actual customer use of those spaces, like if a business had unfilled spots and wanted to supplement their revenue. Instead, the question is just whether the business has paved more lots than, than the required regulatory minimum. So we still have that abundance of unused parking spots. Maximum seating, which also must be temporary, is only allowed for, for lots greater than two acres in size. Food trucks face separation requirements far beyond other outdoor eating establishments, which are not restricted in proximity from each other. Like you could have a fast food drive-through right next to a fancy steakhouse. And the separation from residential districts only applies for single-family districts. So now that we know that food trucks, food truck courts don't fit in with existing regulations, I'm going to explain a little bit about what exactly they are and how they're different. First, they create an entirely new type of permanent business that wasn't contemplated or, or allowed here before. It generates attention for investors, it draws crowds, and it stimulates economic and social activity. It can be run by a single vendor, a group of vendors, or a separate developer who then partners with vendors. This picture of a food truck court is in Boulder, Colorado. Now, I had to crop out the bike parking, but you can see, you know, different types of, of people from different methods, you know, whether it's by car or by bike or walking, have gotten there, families with little kids. And they're versatile, like regular restaurants and the transient type of food trucks. You can pop out for lunch or get dinner on your way home, but they're also an actual destination for gathering and socializing. And as a principle, instead of accessory use, the parcel can be developed specifically as, as this used and as an attraction. And again, unlike the transient food trucks, the courts operate more like the brick and mortar type restaurants as a permanent fixture that just has food trucks at the center of its business plan. And again, because they operate more like traditional restaurants, they require different regulations. So again, the proposed versions by the applicant and staff are essentially the same. The staff-proposed version incorporates all the main points of the applicant's version, just with technicalities sprinkled over it from, from the various departments. So I'm discussing here the staff-proposed version. Food truck courts would be allowed in non-residential zones. And in the neighborhood commercial zone, a special use permit would be required. And since they operate more like typical restaurants, the same sort of regulations would apply. The outdoor eating standards in the proposed ordinance came directly from the section of the city code that's applicable to other outdoor eating establishments. Please note that, that in that section of the proposed ordinance, it says that the outdoor portions must close by 11:00 PM. That whole section was taken from the existing regulations for all outdoor eating establishments. And it turns out that that requirement about closing at 11:00 is unenforceable and actually isn't enforced. So this ordinance would not include that provision, which also needs to be removed from, from the city code. The site plan must undergo formal procedures as a, for major site plan review, including getting approval from all pertinent departments. An annual zoning department, zoning permit, verify compliance with all the standards would be required. And the site would be subject to inspections. The permit would not be renewable unless all of the violations had been cured. So the benefits of creating this new land use category are both social and economic. Increase opportunities for food truck businesses and other businesses that would want to partner with vendors. For vendors, it would give them more choices as to how to operate. Currently, their only choice is as an accessory use in someone else's parking lot. And that, if that works for a vendor, they can definitely continue to do that under the existing regulations. And with the principal use category, there become even more options. The, the developer of a food truck court could be an individual food truck vendor or a group of vendors, or it could be a separate business that partners with the vendors, like tenants, so that the vendors could use the parcel while keeping their own costs down. So this creates a new type of commerce and a way for businesses to invest in communities while expanding the choices available to food truck vendors. It also creates a new option for social outings, which, which I think we're all kind of aching for, especially since this would be outdoors. So the options here would be adoption of the applicant-proposed text amendment, adoption of the staff-proposed amendment, denial of both, revisions and adoption of either, or remanding the proposed text amendments back to staff for further consideration. Staff recommends approval of the staff-proposed amendment. Again, these are your options here and the recommendation. I'm happy to answer any questions that I'm able to answer. And again, the, the applicant is, is here as well.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, we have any speakers for this?
Yes, sir, we have two. Our first speaker is Mr. Jordan Sherrod.
All right, so let me open the public hearing. We'll have any questions for you. Don't get too far, I'm sure. All right, first speaker, please state your name and address for us.
My name is Jordan Sherrod. I live at 1860 Morganton Road.
Good evening, sir.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My team and I have been working with the city for the last several months to draft a proposed, the proposed amendment. I'm here to support the staff's version of the text amendment. A little bit about me, I'm a soldier here at Fort Bragg and a resident in Fayetteville. I'm also an entrepreneur who wants to invest in this community. Our pursuit to establish food truck courts as a new use case in the UDO started early last year when my business partner and I went under contract to transform the old Haymount Auto Shop at 100 Broadfoot into a much-needed, family-friendly gathering space with outdoor games and food trucks. We will be calling it the Haymount Truck Stop. We have seen food truck court trends growing nationally and the benefits that it brings to cities across the U.S., and we want Fayetteville to be a part of that movement. There are a few points that I want to make as you consider supporting this proposed amendment. First, the amendment is specifically about food truck courts and not food trucks themselves. The proposed amendment would not change the existing regulations for food trucks as an accessory use. The accessory use would continue under the existing requirements. Food truck courts themselves are brick and mortar businesses. They require a substantial investment in order to open their doors. And as stated in the text amendment, they will be required to obtain proper permits, licenses, and safety regulations regarding fire, parking, bathroom sanitation, et cetera, just like other brick and mortar businesses. My business partner and I are prepared to spend over a million dollars to renovate the existing building in Haymount in order to meet these requirements and serve local residents. Second, in the era of COVID-19, food truck courts serve patrons in an open-air environment. This is a much-needed diversity of space within the city of Fayetteville. Additionally, food truck courts allow existing restaurants to have a second location, which will help diversify their business in the event of another outbreak like COVID-19. Many restaurants already have a food truck in addition to their brick and mortar location. Finally, a rising tide lifts all ships. This text amendment will help us to continue to grow Haymount and in turn, grow the city of Fayetteville. We will be opening a business that will attract a lot of foot traffic to Haymount. Our patrons will be within a short walking distance of many local businesses and restaurants. Someone who eats at our location may walk down the street to buy a pair of shoes at Fleet Feet or a cup of coffee at La Clair's or a new lease for their dog at Wolfgang. More foot traffic benefits everyone, even other restaurants. It is not about taking a slice of the pie, but growing the pie for everyone in the area. We have talked with many local business owners, even restaurant owners, who have expressed their support for our business to open. This amendment is an opportunity for the city to support local entrepreneurs. Food trucks, food truck courts will help grow the local economy and contribute to the social fabric of Fayetteville.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Stephanie Pericello.
Hello, ma'am, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Can you state your name and address for us, please?
Yes, my name is Stephanie Purcella, and I live at 5041 Miranda Drive in Hope Mills, North Carolina. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. I'm also speaking in support of the staff's amendment. I'm a member of Mr. Sherrod's team. I'm the project manager for the Haymount Truck Stop. And I've had the privilege of working with many of the city's staff members on this amendment over the last several months. And I just wanted to take this time to introduce myself and let you know that I'll also be available to answer any questions you may have along with Mr. Sherrod. And that's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am.
May we have no further speakers?
All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing. And Councilman here.
Thank you, Mayor. Had some conversation with our city attorney during our break. And because I still have a lot of questions, though I'm very, very, very much in support of our food truck location, I mean, this, this, this agenda item, but I'm also want to look at some further amendments. According to the city manager, it would be best that we look at those other concerns that would be related within this ordinance and this amendment. So I would like to table this item and move it to the most earliest work session so that we can get this as soon as possible so that not only this business can move forward, but we could also look at other food truck businesses and look at the restrictions, look at where they can operate without having a permanent structure. And just things along that line. All council members probably have a lot of questions of, well, some, you know, about this. So I'd like to move it to a work session, sir.
All right, so I'll circle back to you for a motion. I think we have a question by Councilmember Ingram.
No, not necessarily, Mr. Mayor. I was prepared to make a motion, but while I have the floor, I would like to say, first, Mr. Sherrod, thank you so much for your service.
We need a second on the, we need a second on the motion.
Well, I, I didn't know he was making, I was trying to address the questions before we, before we did it. I don't think he officially, yeah, so I'll circle back to you. I wanted to get all questions in and then, then we'll do it. So Councilmember Ingram, you can go ahead, please.
As I was saying, Mr. Sherrod, thank you so much for your work on this and your service in the military. I wanted to just kind of take a personal perspective here and I guess dive into past life, living in different communities where before, pre-COVID, food truck courts are a thing. And as our presenter stated, it, it helps us socially and economically. You know, and given the presentation, I, I'm not necessarily, and I know we talked about it during the dinner meeting, that, you know, we could look at it going to work session. But given that they, they've laid out a really good presentation for us of explanation and a lot of clarity, I'm not necessarily sure that, I guess, I would be as supportive of it going to a work session. I also would like to add that we, this is where we are in a sense of where we are having to eat outside or utilize food trucks. And Fayetteville is a place where we like to eat. So when we look at our brick and mortar restaurants and we look at our food trucks, no, I, I personally believe no one's going to miss out because one has this or the other. no, I personally believe no one's going to miss out because one has this or the other. Fayetteville likes to eat.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, can you get it, get us to a question if you have it for staff, and then we'll catch some of that during the discussion.
I'll finish what I'm saying, thank you. So, what I, Fayetteville likes to eat.
Madam Ingram, Councilmember Ingram, please get to a question.
So, what I would like to, I was prepared to make a motion, Mayor.
Well, I'll go to Councilmember Hare, and then I'll come back to you if that's not the case, but I want to catch all questions before you all make a motion, okay? Or a question for the the speakers that are hanging around for that, so some of that can can we catch on the discussion side. Councilman Davis, and then Waddell.
I was ready for the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Waddell.
I'm prepared to second Councilmember Ingram's motion, thank you.
Okay, so back to Councilmember Hare, and then Ingram if necessary. Yeah, I think all questions have been addressed, so I think three or four of you all want to mention a motion.
Yes, sir, as I was stating early, I would like to make a motion that we move this to a work session to entertain all concerns, very, like, as I was stating, very, very supportive of the direction of the food truck courts. And but just because there are some additional questions and trying to make sure that the other amendments can fit in with this amendments without us continuing to change and add additional amendments or sections to it, I would like to move it to a work session, the most earliest that we can to move forward with this proposal. When would that be, Mr. Manager?
Next week.
I don't know that we'll be ready next week to have a substantive conversation, but we'll check with staff tomorrow, and we will let y'all know.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr.
All right, is that a motion, sir?
Oh, yes, sir.
All right, so it's a motion by Councilmember Hare, is there a second to move to the work session? Second by Councilman Davis, any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. This is to move to the next available work session for discussion. Councilmember Ingram.
Green.
Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin.
Green.
All right, yeah, I think that's everybody, all right. Motion carries five to four. Those voting in favor, Councilman Davis, Wright, Colvin, Jensen, Hare. Those voting opposed, Councilmen, Councilmembers Banks, McLaughlin, Ingram, Kinston, and Waddell. Mr. Manager, you had something?
Yes, sir, staff will meet first thing tomorrow, and we will make council aware of when we can bring this back to you. But if there are any questions specifically, Mr. Hare, we'll reach out to you tomorrow, if that's okay? Try to coordinate a time.
Yeah, time is money for business people, so.
Yes, as we know.
I want to, okay, all right. Thank you. All right, thank you, you guys. We'll hopefully, we'll have a discussion and look to get this back before us quickly. Item 9.04, text amendment for 160D, Chapter 30, UDO.
Hello again.
All right.
Hello again, this one is going to go much, much more quickly, I think. They are the proposed text amendments which are necessary to keep our city code in compliance and in alignment with the new state laws codified in Chapter 160D of the North Carolina General Statutes. Now, as a batch, these amendments have been before city council twice at work sessions, so there won't be any surprises tonight, and this should go pretty quickly. Just for some background, prior to the adoption of Chapter 160D, development regulations had not undergone anything this significant in over 115 years. It is the first major recodification and modernization since 1905. So, the state enabling statutes and laws confer authority to the city to regulate and also include restrictions and requirements. Chapter 160D takes the city and county enabling statutes and requirements, updates them, reorganizes them into a more centralized and logical sequence, and repeals those laws that replaced. The effects of these changes, which must be incorporated by July 1st, are citywide. They apply mostly to city procedures as opposed to, say, design standards, and they mostly just tighten up existing procedures. The changes that are most pervasive are just terminology. They don't change anything but the name, but they do merit some attention. So, up until now, we've used the term "public hearing" or "standard public hearing" to mean a specific type of hearing. But the new regulations clarify that the term "public hearing" is not specific, but instead is a general term that includes legislative hearings and evidentiary hearings. So, it's now required that we specify, we can't just say "public hearing." It's either a legislative hearing, as this one is, or an evidentiary hearing, as were the earlier ones on special use permits. So, that that will require a lot of updates to forms and our common vernacular, but no change to process. Notice provisions for evidentiary hearings, this was singled out and discussed separately in detail, and the fallout is that we will no longer send out publications via newspaper for these very specific types of hearings, but we will continue to provide notice by mail and posting on the property. Statements of consistency and reasonableness, this again is one of those changes that is just being tightened up. We already have that requirement, but it just has some tightened features to it. So, that's about it. Same options, adoption of the proposed text amendments, denial, revisions and adoption, and remanding of the proposed text amendments back to staff for further consideration. Staff recommends option one, adoption of the proposed text amendments.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, any speakers?
No, sir, no speakers for this item.
All right, with that, we'll open and close the public hearing. So, it would have been nice to get the new vernacular before I had to put it in play tonight. You know, I didn't know we were using 1905 verbiage.
It's work in progress.
Counsel, any questions, or can we look to you for action on this update? Mayor Pro Tim Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the text amendment for 160D, Chapter 30 of the UDO.
All right, it's a motion by Mayor Pro Tim to approve presented text amendment. Is there a second? A second by Councilman Davis. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes on this item. Councilmember Ingram.
Green.
Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin.
Green.
All right, motion carries unanimously by those present. Thank you, ma'am. Item 9.05, annexation request, Andrews Road. Hello, sir, Mr. Nash, how you doing?
Good evening, just fine, sir, thank you. Got to find the PowerPoint, just a minute. Not yet, there's a whole lot up here. Too many in here tonight. Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. This will be the public hearing regarding the annexation of the property on Andrews Road. Two or three items back, you just had a little public hearing on how the property should be zoned. And I know you saw maps there, but I have a few here and try to rush through this. Again, the same applicant is in the zoning case, we're talking about 55 acres. It will involve 322 housing units if the property is built. It's currently vacant, and this vicinity map shows you the location. Areas shaded in yellow are currently in the city. This is Andrews Road right here, Ramsey Street running north-south like this, the new outer loop down here, Pine Forest High School right over here, surrounding neighborhoods such as Fairfield Farm, Fairfield Farm, I'm sorry, Stone Gate, Stone Mountain neighborhood over here, which is not in the city. Of course, the hatch pattern is indicating the annex area proposed for annexation. The hospital was mentioned earlier, it would be located right here, and Andrews Common Shopping Center is here on the corner of Andrews Road and Ramsey Street. Just a couple of property photos, this is looking east towards Andrews Common Shopping Center, looking into the site, that's Fairfield Farm in the background. Looking down Andrews Road, on a high elevation down the road, the property is on the left here in this particular photo, left of those vehicles, and a nearby adjacent house or residential property, our legal description map. So, a couple of things we consider on all annexations by petition is if it's a contiguous area, it's going to meet the standard of being contiguous by definition. Has have the people who actually own the property signed the petition and gone through all the hoops of correctly signing it, and the answer there is yes. Can city departments provide services? Answer, we found through contacting our city departments was yes. The question was asked about fire service. The fire department, Station Number 19, is just up Andrews Road, about a mile away from this site at the corner of Walsh Parkway and Andrews Road, just beyond the Pine Forest High School. All of the other city departments can provide it. Another part of fire protection would be installation of fire hydrants if needed. There are some out there already on Andrews, but probably some more will be requested by the fire marshal. Can PWC provide services? The answer is yes for water and sewer, they're already available. That's what actually is driving, part of the reason for driving this annexation, their policy on that. We understand that the developer has not made a choice yet on electrical service. PWC, I believe, could provide it, but there's two other companies that could also be chosen by the developer, either South River or Duke Energy. So, the options available to you, adopt the ordinance, the effective date would need to be set either tonight, or this coming June 30th, or the following June 30th. Do not adopt the ordinance or table action. That pretty much wraps up my part. You now need to open your public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Nash. Madam Clerk.
May we have no speakers for this item.
All right, that will open and close the public hearing. And Mayor Pro Tim Jensen, is there a light?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion that we adopt the ordinance.
Let me just double-check there, no questions, I don't see any lights, but any questions before we move to motion? All right, Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the ordinance that will go into effect at the date of March 22nd, 2021.
All right, it's a motion by Mayor Pro Tim to adopt said ordinance, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Waddell, any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for action on this. Councilmember Ingram.
Green.
Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin.
Green.
All right, all right, motion carries. All right, item, Mr. Nash, thank you, sir. And Mr. Nash got the award last month for the nicest guy in the city government. Thank you. All right, item 10.01, appointment of Millennial Commission, Councilmember Waddell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, excuse me. I had occasion to listen to or participate in the most recent Millennial Advisory Commission meeting, and as I listened, I observed that without exception, every member of the commission that spoke, spoke very highly of Mr. Benevente and requested that he be reconsidered as a part of their board. We were each sent a copy of that at Councilmember Davis's request, a copy of that meeting. So, each of you should have had occasion, should you have chosen to have heard some of the sentiments that were expressed. Based upon that, I would like to move that we appoint Mr. Mario Benevente to the Millennial Advisory Commission to fill the final slot.
Thank you.
All right, it's a motion by Councilmember Waddell, is a second by Councilmember Ingram, her and Kinston kind of hit it at the same time. All right, any discussion on the motion? This is for the reconsideration of Mr. Benevente, all right? Council, I'll look to you for your votes. Councilmember Ingram.
Green.
Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin.
Green.
All right, Madam Clerk, that motion fails four to five. Those voting in favor, Councilman Davis, you got two lights on. All right, let's revote, y'all. All right, all right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. One vote. All right, Councilmember Ingram.
That's a green.
Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin.
Green.
All right, Madam Clerk, that motion fails four to five. Those voting in favor of the motion, Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin, Councilmember Ingram, Councilmember Waddell, and Councilmember Kinston. Those voting opposed, Councilmember Davis, Councilmember Wright, Jensen, and Hare. Jermaine, do this, action. Counsel.
Being that Councilmember Dawkins is not here, where does his vote fall?
He was, he's not considered all night because he was not here and then left, so he just was a no-show.
Okay, thank you for your comment.
All right, Councilman Davis, your light's on, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I want to make another motion.
All right.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Ms. Attorney Caleb Tyler Taylor McCallum.
All right, it's a motion by Councilman Davis for consideration of appointment for Mr. McC, Mr. Column, the second by Councilmember Wright. Discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your vote. Councilmember Ingram.
Red.
Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin.
Green.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, my hand was raised.
Was your hand raised when?
Since, since we'd be in the discussion.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't see that, but, yes. All right, Madam Attorney, how do we, how do we handle that?
Was this discussion fair?
It should have happened, but yeah, Jennifer's confirming that she did say that. Okay, all right, so council, we'll revote, yes, ma'am, during discussion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. What, so, as Councilmember Waddell stated earlier, I also sat in on the Millennial Commission Advisory Meeting, and I remember onset of the Millennial Commission being set up, and one of the things that that stood out most to me was the, the support this commission gave to that individual to be on.
Councilmember Ingram, are you, are you speaking of Mr. Benevente, or this motion is on the floor?
Mr. Mayor, can you please let me get to.
No, it's an important piece because the discussion is about this motion.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
No, we dispose of it at first motion.
One of the things that I wanted to just.
No, no, ma'am, hold on one second, Madam, Madam. No, ma'am, hold on one second, Madam, Madam Clerk, when the first motion was voted second and voted on, when did Councilmember Ingram's hand come up? Because that motion was, they voted, everybody voted, so there was no discussion on the first motion. This is, this is the discussion phase of the subsequent motion which was made by?
My hand was raised since that.
By David, hold on, hold on one second, ma'am? Okay, during which part, though? Of the second motion? At the first motion? Even so, she voted but didn't have any discussion? Okay, but go, go ahead, ma'am, all right, I got you. Councilmember Ingram, go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. So, as I was saying, one of the things that was brought up, you know, within the Millennial Commission, what Millennial Advisory Commission is that, though it, you know, it happened to a specific person, one of the things that they did express was ensuring that something like that did not happen again where a member felt singled out for express, you know, living their daily lives or expressing their personal views. And I, one of the things I want to add to that is, we have some councilmembers or a councilmember that, in my perspectives, my perspective will make racist slurs, and nothing happens. And to see a private citizen who is volunteering their time of a demographic that is small, smallly represented in this city, I just would want each and every one of us to consider that, that we not make this a habit of retaliating against a private citizen for their personal and private views. Thank you.
Thank you, all right, counsel, we're in the discussion phase. Just before we take the revote, just to make sure that was clean in the process, I wanted to kind of just explain what happened as a motion. It was seconded and voted on for the previous action, for the reappointment or reconsideration of appointment. And then there is a motion on the floor now by Councilman Davis, seconded by Councilmember Wright, and we're in the discussion phase of that. And so, with that, counsel, we'll look to you for your votes. And this is in favor of, can you restate your motion just because of everything?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we appoint Mr. Taylor McCollman to the Millennial Council, Millennial Commission.
All right, so it's a motion by Councilmember Davis, is a second by Councilmember Wright. All right, counsel, I'll look to you for action on this subsequent motion. All right, Councilmember Ingram?
Red.
Councilmember Banks-McGloffen?
Red.
All right, Madam Clerk, that motion is five to four, carries. Councilman Davis voting in favor, Wright, Colvin, Jensen, Hare, those voting opposed, Councilmember Ingram, Waddell, Kenson, and, and Banks-McGloffen. All right. Item 11, 10.02, counsel, the appointment of the remaining seat, single seat for PWC. I did receive an email earlier today from Councilmember Dawkins, I need to share. Most of us received that, it reads as follows, "Mayor, I would like to vote on the PWC appointment, one of the biggest votes we take each year. My flight has been delayed, I won't disclose specifics of that. Would you please ask counsel to consider delaying the vote until the next meeting where I can also participate?" So, that is from Councilmember Dawkins. And counsel, I'll pose that to you, but this is the next item that is on the agenda. Councilmember Ingram?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Since when do we acknowledge motions from members who are not here?
Who, who acknowledged the motion?
Okay, so, it sounds to me you're asking us to state what he wants, and he's not here for this meeting.
All I did was shared, read the email aloud since we're on that item.
Oh, okay, well, this is new. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, I guess, appoint Ted Moan to the PWC Board and Commission.
Okay, it's a motion by Councilmember Ingram to, to recommend Councilmember, former Councilmember Ted Moan?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question before we get to the motions.
Okay.
And it's in specifically, it's specifically regarding?
Let me dispose of this first, if there's not a second, then I'll, I'll come to.
Well, I'll make a second for her motion, but I still have a question.
So, now discussion, you're floor.
So, my question is, and I don't know if this would be to the city clerk or to the city attorney, when we have already approved the agenda, and let me begin by saying, I'm not opposed to waiting on Councilmember Dawkins. I would hope that if I were in a situation where I were, you know, prevented from being at a meeting at no fault of my own, the same consideration would be given to me. However, procedurally, my question is, knowing that this was something that we, we all were aware before we came into the meeting because the email was sent to all of us, should this have been a part of amending the agenda? Or at this point, how should this be handled? Because we approved the agenda with this item included.
You, you did approve the agenda with this item on it, but certainly, if it is the interest of council, the motion can be made to delay the item.
Would that require a super majority vote, or just a vote of the majority?
A vote of the majority, no different than Councilmember Hare's motion earlier at the conclusion of the public hearing, not to take action but to refer it to the work session.
Understood, thank you very much for that clarification, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, so there's a motion by Councilmember Ingram for the recommendation of former Councilmember Ted Moan, it was a second by Councilmember Waddell, any further discussion? Hold on, hold on, counsel, before you, before you do that. You had a question, okay, all right, Councilmember Wright?
Yes, I'm, I'm a little confused now because of the, the information we heard from Councilman Dawkins. Are we, what are we going to do about that? I mean, are we going to continue to make our motions without him? Or are we going to consider his requests as a council prior to going forward? I mean, you eloquently stated, if it was you, you would have wanted to us to consider that. So, should we consider an absentee councilperson on such an important vote as we are about to take, given he's requested for, for delay until the next meeting?
You, so, Councilmember Wright, you certainly have two options on the floor. Should the maker of the motion wish to withdraw their motion, then they can. But you have a motion and a second, at which time the vote does not pass, then someone could make a, another motion consistent with the councilmember's interest.
All right, any further discussion on that? This is a motion to consider former Councilmember Moan. We have a question or a discussion?
Yeah, would the councilwoman like to do a friendly amendment or retract it in order to, as Councilwoman Waddell pointed out, give council an opportunity to table this until the next meeting where Council Dawkins can make his vote? You think councilwoman would be willing to retract that motion?
Excuse me, and I don't mean this to be rude, but, you know, I'm on Zoom right now. Zoom has call-in capabilities, and so therefore, if this was that important, he could have called in. My motion stays as such.
Okay, all right, any other discussion? Counsel, I'll look to you for a vote on the motion that's on the floor for the appointment of Council, former Councilmember Moan. All right, Councilmember Ingram?
Green.
Councilmember Banks-McGloffen?
Green.
All right. Motion fails three to six, those voting in favor, two, three, four, five, six. Yeah, those voting in favor, Councilmember Ingram, Banks-McGloffen, and Waddell, those voting opposed, Councilman Davis, Wright, Colvin, Jensen, Hare, and Kenson. Councilman Davis, see your light.
Yes, Mr. Motion, in light of the email that we've all seen and in light of statements of several councilmembers here, I'd like to make a motion that we table the rest of this until, the rest of the voting on this item until Councilman Johnny L. Dawkins returns. I know he's very, very involved in this process, he was acting on the appointment committee, and as we already know, on no fault of his own, he's not here. So, I'd like to make a motion that we table this until our next council meeting, and then at that time, I'll do a vote on it.
All right, it's a motion by Councilmember Davis, I think, is a second by you, Councilman Wright, your light. All right, any discussion on that motion to continue this item until the following council meeting? All right, counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. Councilmember Ingram?
Red.
Councilmember Banks-McGloffen?
Red.
All right. All right, those voting, motion carries six to three. Those voting in favor, Councilman Davis, Wright, Jensen, Hare, and Waddell. Those voting opposed, Councilmember Ingram, Banks-McGloffen, and Kenson. You got it, Madam Clerk, all right. All right, counsel, motion to adjourn? Don't move, Mr. Mayor. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Well, I would, I would like to add, I forgot to mention it during the announcement, but Federal State did gain a new chancellor this week, and so I just wanted to give a warm, bad-bill welcome to Dr. Allison, Chancellor, excuse me, Chancellor Allison, and wish him the best at Federal State.
Thank you, ma'am, all right, motion adjourned, I mean, meeting adjourned.